Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. We do have, it looks like one of the public hearings this evening for Spring Avenue has requested a continuance, so if you're here this evening for that, it would be continued probably to the April 9th meeting. I would ask if anybody's recording, they make it known. Have you gentlemen had a chance to do the minutes of February 26th? I was not present, so. How about you, Mike? John, were you here on the 26th? Yeah, I guess you were.
Yes, it was. Did you read through them, John?
What's that?
Did you look through the minutes yet?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just looking for... I've got several copies of the lot release, but, ah, covenant. What are you doing? Hey, John, what are you doing? I'm further still. Looks like a long one.
Pretty much how I remember it.
Can I get a motion?
A couple of questions, please. Page five.
I'm not sure your mic's on, Emmanuel.
Sorry, can you hear me? The green light is on.
Yeah, but you gotta use it then.
You didn't hear you bother.
Said you gotta use it.
Thank you. Better?
That's much better.
I don't understand a sentence under item number two, lot definition, and I wonder if it might cause future confusion. I don't remember what we discussed at the meeting, but the term "or for any other definite purpose," is it not vague? What does it serve?
Where are you?
Page five.
Okay.
Definition.
A parcel of land used or set aside and available for use as the site of one or more buildings. It's not really a definition of a lot.
The words "or for any other definite purpose," what do they serve in terms of the definition? And I say, I don't remember if we discussed them then, or...
I don't recall.
I don't know how you could put that. Did you see that, John?
Yeah.
I don't know how that defines a lot. There's no reference to area or frontage or...
Not sure I know what that means either. Typically, the only reason you'd have a lot defined would be for building purposes, and it meets the frontage and the area requirements for the zone that it's located in. There are exceptions to that, obviously, grandfathered lots and so forth, but with the definition of a lot, that's what it would be, you know, subject to other provisions in the statute that allow for...
One or two paragraphs before that it mentions non-conforming uses in lots. I don't know if that would put it in context or...
My question is, what do those five, six words, what purpose do they serve? And if I were reading the code cold, they would confuse me if I were trying to interpret or implement the code.
How's it defined in the zoning bylaw now?
Good question. You've been out to number two right on the page, though. It says under as provided by the zoning bylaw, so.
Get my copy, please.
Yeah, you want Charlie, you want that?
I was just looking to see if I had my copy of the zoning bylaw.
Oh, the zoning book, yeah, I don't have that either.
An area or parcel of land or any part thereof, not including water area, in common ownership designated on a plan duly filed by its owner or owners as a separate lot and recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. There's more, or many, sorry, there are more, but that's the one with the word LOT in front of it.
I don't know. I don't think either one of them is terribly good, but I would agree. I don't know what it means by having that phrase in there either.
I mean, I'm sorry I didn't pick it up at the meeting last time, but I...
Is it still subject to town meeting vote?
This is, yes. That's the hearing on the town meeting articles.
Was the definition approved at your hearing?
Yeah, but I...
He recommended favorable action, 00.
But I think those were notes, some of those were like notes that Ken was taking and writing out. Probably didn't see the exact wording at the time. Well, I guess we could leave that one thing out for right now until we talk with Ken and see if his notes had that worded a little different. What do you think, Mr. Chairman?
If you wish to table it at this time, it's no problem.
Well, I think we should get the lot right, so it'd probably be worth talking with Ken, either that or building inspector to see what his wording was. I think him and Ken were working on some of these definitions, so I'd rather see the wording one more time.
And while we're talking about it, there's in item number two, it's just me, I guess I don't understand it. Could someone explain to me the meaning of a lease of 99 years, of which term there are not less than 50 years remaining unexpired? If there are 45 years remaining, does that mean that it doesn't hold?
Yeah, that one doesn't make, I didn't get that. The 99 years is I've always seen, but not less than 50 years remaining unexpired, yeah, that's a, I haven't seen that.
One could read it that at 45 years, you don't have ownership.
Exactly.
Or a right to, I, so I think those two things we should reconsider.
So do you want an approval?
No.
Accept that or just table this?
I would just assume we resolve the whole thing and get another look at it. The next item on the agenda is Bay Point Bond, phase one.
And hopefully have it here.
Chris Reynolds from Stone Street Corp. We submitted the bond information, been working back and forth with Charlie and Ken for the last couple of weeks and came to agreement on the amount and the breakdown, and now looking for your approval. I need the planning ward approval, and then I need the selectman approval, as I understand it.
Is that in your package? No, this was a copy Charlie sent out this morning for this 40B, and I didn't read today's emails, so he's letting me use his copy here for a few minutes.
Is there any documentation submitted?
Yes. Would you like my copy? I've got a couple of copies.
I don't seem to have anything on that.
Anything on that? You don't have any on the form from Bay Point, do you? Just my copy?
Thanks.
Thank you.
So what you see there is an estimate that was prepared for the work, and what we did was we just broke it into two phases, which is basically the, you know, Station 13 to 30, that's kind of where Phase One is being worked on, and in that term it's called second phase, but Station Zero, that Bay Point Drive to that first 13, first 1,300 feet. So we just broke it down for clarity, but basically we're getting a bond from Station Zero, which is Bay Point Drive, that intersection onset app all the way, you know, as you take a right after the clubhouse. So all that work we're doing in Phase One, so bonding that whole amount. The only thing we're not bonding is kind of to the left, which is Star War Drive, which is Phase Two, which we're still going to come back for approval for. So what we do when we took that amount, we did, went back and forth with Charlie on some of the items and finalized the amount, and basically it comes to like 462,000, and then we added 50% onto that amount to 695,000, which would be what we'd be getting for a bond amount.
Why does it say that? I don't...
So basically, Ken, I don't have Ken's letter, so basically what we did was we did the estimate, and then Ken agreed with it and said, yes, you need to get a bond for 150% of that value.
Right.
I just didn't print that out.
Right. So this Phase One, Charlie, you looked at all these numbers here? So Phase One is 323 roughly?
Yeah, I gave you my copy.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yes, yeah.
And then 150% of that?
Yeah.
500,000.
Yeah, and then Phase Two or the first?
I'm sorry?
Phase One does not include the first portion of Bay Point Drive, so there's an added amount that takes it up.
Yes, so there's a second page, yeah.
So when you refer, when you refer to Phase Two, you're talking the initial roadway to do with the approved Phase One?
Exactly, and we just broke it into two sections for that. Basically, that's, you know, we're going to come in with a Cedar Plan, which will change that roadway, so that's why we just broke that estimate, because we're going to, you know, obviously do something different with that first 1,300 feet, so we just broke it for clarity, but really those combined amount is the true Phase One, that when we get done Phase One, we have to do all that work.
You've reviewed these, Charlie, and you're okay with this?
So if the total is up around 600,000, then they'll have to prepare a bond, which will make the town the effective recipient of that in the event that they would default on the work. That's typical language. It goes into your bond amount, and it needs to be automatically renewable, can't expire without being renewed before its expiration date. So that terminology and everything needs to go into the bond document, which I don't think any of us have seen yet.
Right, and I just, the bond document Ken gave me, so that's, so I'm using that document that was provided by...
What is the original term on the bond? Two years?
It hasn't been written yet.
What is your intent? What is the timeline on this Phase One work?
I thought the approvals was two years and then conditional.
There's two years on the covenant for the roadway subdivision plan, so the bond itself is not that document. There is an automatic portion of that covenant document that got filed in the Registry of Deeds that says all the work has to be completed within two years. If it's not, then they have to come in and ask for an extension of time on it.
So then if it didn't get done, then the bond would actually come into effect? So there's really no end to it?
It was the result of the industrial part. That's not quite true. The only time that it would come into effect would be if you vacate the premises and you don't complete the work. If the covenant expires, then everything simply comes to a screeching halt until such time as you've renewed it, but if the board chooses, it could make the bond amount expire at the same time, or, well, that wouldn't be right because you've got time running on the two years already, but they could make it a two-year document as well, so that it would automatically expire within two years of whenever the final bond date is set, and if you don't get things done by then, then you've got to renew that bond.
And what if they, what if they redesign?
That's an entirely different thing. That means that they would be coming back into the board with an application to modify the existing special permit, modify the existing subdivision approval that was granted under that, under the approval that they have now.
Okay. Well, they're going to be doing that, though, right, with the...
They would, but what this is, what they're asking for is to approve this amount, which they could then go back and insert into a proposed bond, which they would bring back to you to read and to approve. You can set a time limit on that bond if you want, or you could make it just that it has to be automatically renewed within 30 days of the expiration date, whenever the insurance company sets that date, but you want to see that documentation before you approve that. What they're looking for right now is an approval on the amount for the security that's being posted.
All right, so it's the 463,600 and change plus the 150%, brings you to, what was it, 690?
I come up with like 695,150.
Yes. That would be the amount which would be put into the bond.
Okay.
That they would be securing the cost of the construction for, just for the first phase. Yes, yeah, that's fine.
That's assume that we don't do CEDAs, so we do that entire roadway from Station Zero to the end, so this contemplates not doing CEDA, you know, so this way, this way we don't do CEDA, there's...
You don't have a CEDA approval yet.
Right.
What you have is an existing plan that was approved by special permit and a subdivision, so this security is for the construction of that. If you come in and modify it in some way, it's still under this covenant and still under this security until that plan gets modified and you do an adjustment with the bond and renegotiate the terms of the construction and all of that, so this is strictly for what's been approved to date.
That's fine, gotcha.
And if the CEDA goes through, it would be only Phase Two that's going to change?
Kind of, yes, yeah.
Well, it could be a portion of the first portion of Bay Point Drive, too.
Well, that's what the, that's what they're referring to as Phase Two.
Doesn't that road swing right into the CEDA property?
That was my confusion. What we're referring to as Phase Two is not what they're...
The only thing they have approval on Phase Two on is the special permit, and it was simply the concept plan, if you recall. There's been no approval of the road layouts, the construction, the drainage, infrastructure, anything.
What they've referred to as Phase Two is Phase Two of Bay Point Drive. It's the first section of Bay Point.
Yeah.
So I'd say to approve the amount of 695,147 is what I came up with, but I left out some of the change that was involved.
Yeah, the amount's fine, Mr. Chairman, as long as the wording is, you know, Phase Two, as long as the wording is right for just the aspect that it covers, because I don't want someone to think Phase Two of the building.
Yeah, if you look at the heading, it says the station number, Station Zero to Station 13. Yeah, so we did it by the station numbers.
Zero to 13, okay, perfect.
Yeah, so this way it'd be clear.
Maybe a motion should say something in the effect that it's for the approval of the special permit and the subdivision plan for Phase One of Bay Point.
Okay.
From Station Zero to Station 30.
Right, let's just state the exact header in there.
Yeah, exactly.
Go ahead, state that right in there. Go ahead, I'll second it for you. Make a motion to approve Bay Point's bond for Phase One, Station 1300 to 3000.
And from Station Zero to 13, that's second.
And Phase Two bond, Station Zero to 1300. And the amount is six, you're going to have to give me that number again.
I came up with 695,147.
695,147.
Which includes a 50% contingency or escal...
It's put in there for two reasons, yeah. Inflation's part of it. The other aspect of it is that if they should default and the town is to take over, they could be looking at prevailing wages and so forth, which would automatically... We don't know when it's going to take place, so it's a number that is a pretty safe number.
I don't know, I know the selectmen have a say over the release of certain types of surety. I don't think they have a say in the setting of the surety, so I don't know why that's gone to the selectmen for approval.
That's just what Ken said.
Yeah, I think they used to come, as I recall in the past, Mr. Chairman, they'd see them, you know, I saw a few of them, but it was the releases, the only time that we ever dealt with them is when they came for the release, so...
We can work that out.
You're still going to have to see the bond itself.
Yeah, we haven't seen the legal document, so.
So for now, the amount is fine?
So there was a motion, was there a second?
There is a second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Here's your paperwork.
All right, you can have it.
Thank you. Next item is a covenant release for Levin Galt Road. They've heard just talking about it. This was a subdivision that was approved back in 2004, I think. They have a road inspection in October of '05, a lot release, a bond release was in November of '05, and the lot release was done in December of '04. We have several sign-off letters as far as the road being complete. The bond had been, the cash bond had been released, and there's just a covenant hanging out there still.
Far as I can see. So I think that all I might have to do is draft up a release for you guys to sign.
The...
What can be done at this point?
That's what they're seeking at this point, is release of covenant.
Covenant's still outstanding there, John, and what that means is they're selling the property, and the...
With the covenant, they...
...examiner says, well, we won't accept it with a covenant on it, obviously, although I don't know why, because when they built the new house, they financed on that bank.
Well, yeah, you know what, but banks are funny, as you and I both know. Still fighting with those guys, but anyways.
They should have released the covenant at the time that they posted security for the road.
So with all the release letters that they have for the road, for the home, for all that, so...
Evidently in your file, it says that that was all done.
Yeah, so...
At the time that he had posted, he posted security for road construction so he could get his building permit, the covenant should have been released in exchange for the security. I guess it wasn't.
Okay, so would that be a form that council can... Okay, so would that be a form that council can write up and we can release it?
What do you have a form, Charlie?
You'd have to, if George has got one, he'll have to fill it out and sign it.
Okay.
So he can get put on record.
Okay.
For those of you that aren't familiar with it while George is looking, uh, this was a little single lot subdivision with a dirt driveway that went off of Galt Road for the purpose of putting up a duplex. Duplex was put behind an original house, and it ended up between that house and Cranberry Highway, which you can sort of see the back of it from Cranberry Highway. And it was a family sort of deal, and I know that the owner is recently deceased, and that's probably why the bank is taking it over.
Just one big lot.
Yep.
Put off this one.
Right. So what was the road construction?
It was this Davis way, it was a gravel driveway.
Yeah, to driveway to get to the...
So it's this one here?
Yes.
Leading to that back barn?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, I know where that is.
Uh, Charlie, is that one of those that would require a majority, or would the authorized signature do it?
No, I think you need a majority of the board to sign it.
The satellite shows it completed.
Maybe you could just vote on, if you don't have a document, you, Ken could make it out tomorrow. If you'd vote on it tonight, then the vote would be in the record, and then he could...
Drop it off to Ken and...
I think, I think he has a form all set up, but I just don't see it, I don't see it in the file.
Well, that's always great. If I don't have to do any work, I'm happy.
Yeah, I think the majority of the board would have to sign it, though, Bob.
I'll get to Ken in the morning and find out.
So I would ask for a motion? Yes, please.
Entertainer motion to release, uh, the so-called covenant for sixteen and eighteen.
Eleven Galt Road.
Eleven Galt Road.
Eleven Galt Road. Second.
I'm just looking to see if it was referred to as a specific document.
Didn't have a farm, didn't have a farm room to...
Earthbound Farm, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the plant's a earthbound farm.
Michael, you remember who owned it before Gendron?
No.
Peter Beaton? Doug and Peter's grandfather.
Who?
It was all part of the Galt estate, huh, at one time?
That, that was Peter and Clara Beaton's house.
He said another day he wanted everything across from Mackey's house, all the way on the other side.
Galt's did it one time, yeah.
Obviously, I remember, you know, Captain Gendron lived in there for years.
Yeah, that was Peter and Clara Beaton's house before they bought it, though. After they died, they bought it from your state.
Alright, a motion, motion's been read to release the covenant, covenant.
Yeah.
I can't even speak. It looks like it was originally approved as earthbound farm. Eleven Galt Road, or it's now three A and three B, or whatever. Covenant release would be in the planning office, and we'll need at least three signatures on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I need them to sing just sometime tomorrow, probably.
Um, I'll have them send out an email or a text or something to let you know when it's ready.
Yeah, I can swing by. It's a good week, actually.
Well, shall I pick that farm up and type it up for you?
I, he probably has one in the office, so you can want to check in the...
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna check with Ken first thing in the morning.
Yeah.
In between he and I, we'll get it done.
Yeah.
Very good.
I wouldn't get there until late.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen, good to see you. Happy Easter, everybody.
Same to you.
Good to see you.
Good night.
Good night. That's it for tonight, right?
Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Uh, the next item is the continued public hearing for Heidi Dobbin's Moss, Spring Avenue, special permit site plan review. They've requested a continuance from March twenty-sixth to, uh, April ninth for a lot, a lot more time for plan review. So I would look for a motion to continue to April ninth.
So moved.
Seven o'clock?
Sure.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. So, let's see, I can get rid of that and that. The next item is two to eighteenth Seth Toby Realty Trust in sixteen, eighteen Toby Road. This is site plan review and special permit. And I take it that's why you folks are here.
That's us. Uh, Rob Chamberlain on behalf of the owner and Dick O'Hern, land surveyor. I'm sure you remember us from a couple of weeks ago. You read that long set of minutes. A chunk of that probably had to do with us, I don't know. This is what it's shrunk down. That's the small version, yeah.
Now, I think you have some plan revisions since the last meeting, I don't know if there's...
Well, we did submit the, um, the proposed easement, uh, plan essentially. Showing, uh, the entrance instead of coming out onto Seth Toby, coming on to our abutter. The, the main issue, I think, from the last meeting, the main takeaway was that you folks were fairly adamant that you didn't want, um, a curb cut on to Seth Toby and that your preference was, uh, that we work with the abutter to develop a way to come in and out of their property. So, um, we've made contact with our abutter, we've had numerous communications. We seem to have an agreement in principle. They've seen the plan. And we've proposed to them an actual written easement document with a, with an attached easement plan, which they are now reviewing with their engineer and their attorney. So I think we actually accomplished quite a bit in a fairly short period of time on that issue. I, I don't see any reason at this point why we won't come to an agreement on that. So this, so this plan that you're, you're giving us tonight is taking away the curb cut that went out on to, um, Toby Road, and it's showing the entrance going through the parking lot of your neighbor. I'm seeing it driving right through their mail, where they have the mailboxes set up right now. We thought initially, they actually raised the mailbox issue, so, um, we thought the mailbox was going to be out of the curb cut, but Dick was there on Saturday and apparently it's, it's in the flare, I guess. So, um, I told the, uh, I told the abutter, obviously, we'd be responsible for moving that if it had to be moved. So, looks like it has to be moved, so we'll, we'll, we would be responsible for moving it. What, what does this do for your project? See, I, 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 I know you made the comment when you started that, that we were adamant, somewhere, not all. I wanted you to move the, move it down a little bit and then it cut towards the, the corner of the property, and you said it might be tight, but that's okay. But is, is this best practice, Charlie, to go, to, to do, do what they're doing?
If, if you look at your zoning, um, in certain instances, it suggests it.
Okay.
So that it does reduce the amount of curb cuts on your highway.
John, I think...
If it, I was, go ahead, Mike, sorry.
We, uh, Emmanuel and I, I think we was on the same page. We thought it was best served to utilize that second curb cut, or that third curb cut on the Aldi property versus putting another one in on Toby Road. As Charlie said, that was recommended years ago. I think we've been trying to do that in many cases. And this is one that is a win-win for us if this works out.
Okay. Yeah, no, I mean, I, I, I can live with it. I just, you know, I just look at it as, as, as the building will be for somebody for a purpose for so long. If it doesn't work out, they, they sell it, they change it, and the access may, may not be suitable for someone else. You follow me? So I'm just looking at it. Did this, you ran this by the fire department?
Yeah, I've been before the fire department.
They were okay with this?
I haven't given them an actual, uh, drawing show on their fire truck, one way or the other, yet. For the obvious reasons.
No, he's, I think what he's asking, Dick...
I have to know which way to go first.
He's asking if you, if you specifically shown the revision to the fire department. I'm not, have you? The revised plan, that, have you shown?
No, I have not, I have not shown the revised plan yet. But that's one of the reasons we have the thirty-foot entrance instead of the twenty-four foot. Because of the trucks that come in and out of there, and that's why the property to the north of us, they have a thirty-foot drive going all the way down, and at the street line, it's probably about forty-five foot wide. But it's because of the trucks that are, it's intended to handle, that's supposed to be, uh, an entrance to the loading docks in the back of that food store. And they drive down, and just about where the building is now, where it starts, the building starts, the road narrows to twenty-four feet, but the drive going all the way down is a thirty-foot drive.
He did meet extensively with the fire department on the first plan, and they were, they were fine with it. And I don't, functionally, I, I don't think that changing the entrance would change their use and access and egress on to and off the property at all. I think it's almost the same situation from their point of view. Do you, do you see any commercial disadvantage? First of all, I want to thank you for the effort. I really expected, guy didn't even want to talk to us. I'm so surprised and pleased that you were able to even create the option here. But i- is there any commercial disadvantage to this? I mean, as far as visibility of your signage? Well, we were, um, we had, on the initial plan, we had, uh, proposed a sign, uh, on the building on facing the north and, um, and also, even though it, uh, Mr. Rowley pointed out, it, it, it didn't show on the plan it was supposed to. We, we intended to, to have a freestanding sign, which I think we discussed at the last meeting. In light of this, um, I, I do have just a, a revised elevation, which would also ask for a sign on the Seth Toby side of the building as well, um, to, to kind of make up for that, that situation. I mean, sure, we've looked at it from a commercial point of view. I, I don't know. I mean, it's a, it's a toss-up. I mean, you could, you could look at it both ways. You could, you could easily support an opinion that, that it's not as good commercially, and you can support an opinion that is better commercially, so, um... My attitude frankly is, it seemed to, with all due respect to a majority of the board members, it seemed like it was an important point. I mean, in all frankness, I mean, we're trying to get a building up, um, and we're, we're, time is significant to us at this point. So, um, so if, if you, you specifically asked me to try to make the contact and see if we can make it work, and not knowing, of course, what the result was going to be. But thus far, it's been very favorable, and, um, our working relationship has been very positive. So, um, and I'm expecting that, that it'll finish up that way. We don't have that much left to do. I mean, we're just, we're down to the nitty-gritty at this point, so, um... So, I mean, we, we would be satisfied, um, with this approach as long as, as long as we can move forward as expeditiously as possible from this point forward.
I'm a little concerned with your receiving area and you know, your...
A loading dock?
I don't know if you guys had a discussion last time, I wasn't here, but your dumpsters and your loading dock are basically on the front of the building. And if you accept delivery, you cut off half of your parking lot. And now it looks like you're going to be backing the entire length of the site to get to your loading dock?
Well, the, the loading dock is actually on the, on that side of the building, not so much the front. The dumpsters, yes, are out towards the front. The deliveries would not block any parking because the aisle width there was, uh, was increased so that, uh, the delivery truck, uh, would hug the west side there, and that parking would be fully accessible.
I don't believe you'd be able to back out of any of those spaces with the truck in front of them. You've got three compact spaces that are close to where the loading dock begins, but if you simply put a straight truck in there, there's probably four or five spaces you wouldn't be able to get out of until that truck moved.
I'll just worry about a trailer. How's a trailer going to back up and deliver?
What he'd have to do would be to, uh, pull in, uh, make a left-hand turn down toward that retention pond area or those, uh, spaces that are immediately on the front of the building.
Yeah.
And then he'd have to back the whole thing up to get down there.
Yeah.
It's, it's done in a couple of other instances that I can think of. I mentioned it in my report. But in both of those cases, it does not block parking.
Right.
I mean, if the truck has to negotiate that, then you've got a good driver, he can do it. But in those instances I thought of, there's no parking there at all, so...
But that condition existed even with the other proposed curb cut?
Yeah.
That, that didn't change here?
That's right.
So the, the only way to prove that then, John, would be to go with your suggestion and put a second egress down that end? I, I just, you know, I, I, I build them all the time. We do these parking lots with all these curbs and, you know, like the, the plaza. You know, you go up and you get the little horseshoe and all the guy. I can't understand why we put all these little curbs in. I mean, they look great on paper and the landscape, but you can't drive around.
A lot of them don't work.
None of them, you know, so, so, uh... At the current, at the current location in Rosebrook, you don't even have a loading dock. No, it's, that's, that's... They're just dropping in the, uh...
Right. This, this isn't even a dock. What you see is that grade.
Yeah, yeah, it's like a...
Well, it's a ramp, actually.
Yeah, so they're going to walk it in along where the, it's labeled loading to that dotted area, and then around the corner into the building.
I, I just, I mean, I look at it and I say to myself, you know, when comes the truck and, and, you know...
That's how we take delivery. It's how almost every store takes delivery in that manner. There's nothing really unusual about that.
Yeah, I mean, even the beer trucks, they're not there that long, really, when you think about it. The beer or the truck?
They, they do very well adapting to the conditions, actually, and that's their, you know, that's kind of their job. So they send the equipment that works for the site, generally.
Well, I, 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 I'm fine. If, 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 if my partners here are all happy with the entry, I, I can live with the entry if it works out for you. It's, it's fine. I'd, like I say, I like to see you get started and up and running, but we just want to be safe, that's all.
Agreed.
I, I just would ha- ask the board. I, I do appreciate this again. The slab is empty next to Aldi's right now. So I would hate to de- depreciate a, you know, a well-designed building aesthetically and hide it behind the back wall of a, another grocery store on that slab. Do you know the slab I'm talking about? So it's really, it's something we need to consider as a courtesy now to this building owner. Is, is, what, what is the profile of that building that goes on to the slab adjacent to Aldi's? Because there's one of two outcomes. Either you then have a, you know, a brick wall looking out at this thing, or you could change the, the profile on the slab so it's storefront looking out onto Toby Road from there. And then, and then the type of business then starts to dictate... And then, and then the type of business then starts to dictate how much traffic is coming to this one consolidated entry egress out of here. So it's, it's part of the reason that I asked for these, these two property owners to talk now. So that they're seeing in the future the possibilities that happen next to Aldi's.
Okay, so next to Aldi's, is that not one of the lots that the applicant came, said he wants to expand it and make it bigger? And I said that, no, that's ten pounds in a five-pound bag. Is that the same conversation, Mike, we had?
But no, I don't think that's the slab. The slab, the slab next to Aldi's stays static.
Two of them they wanted to change.
He wanted to go, oh, two of them they did?
The slab and the one on the road.
And the one on the road.
On Toby Road, I mean.
The smallest of the slab where they were gonna go.
The mulched area that's side of the auto store now.
Right.
That's the proposed building. And that's the one they wanted to expand to lengthen about ninety feet.
Right.
But there is another series of storefronts that's adjacent to Aldi's. It's a part of Aldi's that goes out toward Toby Road. And that would take up the area that's mulched right now.
Yeah.
What it probably would not do would be to cut down an awful lot of the site view that you see from Toby Road as you're coming down Toby Road toward this site. Because their building is cut off back in this area somewhere. So it's not like the building that's going next to Aldi's will go all the way out to Toby Road. Because there's a parking area out there now that'll stay there.
Right.
So.
Yeah, that's demonstrated on here.
Yeah, yeah.
Right now. But I'm talking about this mulched area right here.
A portion of that would end up being additional building space under a special permit. But if you look at where the storefront would be for Liquors and More and then project a line of sight out to Toby Road, you'll way down almost to the next entrance before you lose any sight of it. So it's, it's not blocking it, really.
Well.
Is, is there a reason that the store couldn't be slid kind of northeast and allow for your loading and dumpsters to be put along the side of the building?
Well, number one, the site is very tight. It's taken quite a bit of study plans to get to this plan. In order to construct the parking that's required, which is twenty-four spaces, that's what's required and that's exactly what's proposed to be built. There really, there really isn't any room to move the building to the north without eliminating a significant amount of parking. You've also got some grade issues over on the southerly side where the proposed loading area is now. Which, and you've got, you know, site coverage issues. So every time we add asphalt here, you know, we, we create, we create a site coverage issue. So that's primary, those are the primary reasons we didn't run a, you know, a delivery access down that, down that southerly portion. There just really wasn't a way to do it. And meet all the other requirements. I mean, it's a, you know, I mean, you guys do this a lot. You know, it's a, it's a puzzle. You know, you've got a whole lot of requirements that you're trying to meet on the site. And so as it stands now, this proposal complies. So, I mean, we'll look at anything. I mean, if you tell us, well, you know, we'd be willing to, you know, waive this or, you know, grant a a waiver on some of the requirements in order to accomplish something, we're happy to look at it. I mean, do we really need twenty-four spaces? I, you know, boy, I'd love to think so, but the reality is probably not.
Yeah. That type of operation, what are they in there for, fifteen minutes?
Well, yeah, if that. I mean, you're trying to, you know, you're trying to create a convenience situation. The parking that's most likely to be used is the, you know, the stuff that comes in on the north side of the building and the stuff that's on the northerly side of the west side parking. So that's, that's where most people are gonna park. We would put the employees in either the parallel spaces or the compact spaces down, you know, down in the loading area. So. You know, I, I, I understand the concern.
What I see is a site that's gonna be hamstrung every time you get a delivery. They want to empty the dumpsters or-
I mean, if the delivery trucks do what they're supposed to do, that you're gonna have full ability to drive to back out of those spaces and exit. So not only that, I mean, there's plenty of other parking on the site. I mean, even, even if what you guys say is correct, that the spaces are blocked, I mean, there's gonna be more than sufficient parking there. It's, it's not like we're gonna be loading it onto the street or anything. So.
Well, I, I also appreciate very much that you made this effort and thank you. And my comments are going to be from the point of view of making it better. My questions are for, towards that.
Sure.
When the site plan was done, was it, did you consider having the building closer to the road? More visibility, greater presence? There may be a reason that it's not closer to the road.
Well, I think there's, again, it's really, you've got to get the parking in. So there's really, there's no way to get the, if we put the building towards Seth Toby and tried to park the cars in the back, I don't think there's really any way that that would, that that would work.
Well, in conjunction with the good move that you made to combine the curb cuts off the road, if the entrance into the lot were about a hundred or so feet farther down, now you've got a longer drive, giving drivers more opportunity to be lined up when they enter or exit the site of the, your property. And it would, I'm just asking, not, not saying you should do this, but if this were flipped, exactly the configuration that you have, now the building has greater presence on the street, the entrance that you have accommodated, our requests now moves farther to the southwest, creating a more linear drive. You're not changing the architecture, you're not changing the building in any way. But it could be that it's a marketing preference to have the parking on the roadside rather than the other side. It's a question. I think it gives the building greater presence from the street. But that's a question. Maybe there was a reason that it's here.
I-
And the benefit-
I think the reason it's there is because that's the way to make the site work the best. I mean, I, I don't think the building is gonna require significantly more presence. It's, it's a, it's a, architecturally, I think it's a pretty appealing building and it's going to, it's, it's, I think it's gonna stand out just fine the way it is, but.
From a, from a urban perspective, it, I stand to be corrected. I prefer to see a building rather than cars or parking lots.
Well, I mean, that's, you know, you run into that. Some people, you know, some people like to have the, the parking in the back and most developers like to have the parking in the front. So maybe that's our, maybe that's the difference of opinion that we're having, I don't know. But, but I mean, there's, I mean, we're adding so little parking in comparison to the amount of visible parking that's in that area now on all the other sites. I, I don't, I don't think we're doing any harm.
On the practical matter, though, do you sense that there would be any traffic conflicts in and out with the entrance exit from your site being so close to the road? A car exiting never really has a straight-on, you know, a view perpendicular to the road. You're always turning. And I, the suggestion or the question of moving the building closer to the road allows you to have a longer drive before you turn into the parking. Again, just a question.
Yeah, I-
There is a benefit to that.
I don't think we're gonna have that many cars exiting and entering and consecutively. And I, we did actually look at that. And, you know, you can queue three or four cars there, I believe. So I, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be, I don't think it's gonna be an issue.
So when we did the parking lot, our main concern, of course, was to get the, the number of parking spaces. The second thing was to be able to get the turning radius required by, by the, by actually the largest tractor-trailer truck, according to the Green Book of Ashry, which is a forty-five-foot turning radius. And this is really the only layouts that really work with that.
And that's the discussion that Dick had with the fire department, which was the turning radius discussion, so.
Right.
And that we actually did have to change, not because of the fire department, but in general, we did have to move the locate, the, the first location we came up with for the building in order to get the radiuses, or radii, I guess, to be correct.
Charlie, you see the, the, in the front, this, this first, this first, the right hand, the curve on the right side?
Yeah.
As you head out?
Yeah.
We need that to come in so far. I mean, they show like a twenty-four-foot roadway in between it. They have, looks like two parallel parking spaces, but-
Yeah.
Is that gonna help them any if that slid back?
No, I don't, I don't see as that's gonna help an awful lot. If, if a tractor-trailer comes in the entrance that they have shown on the revised plan, in order to take another left-hand turn to get in here, into that area you're talking about.
Right.
And the, the greater the swing, the better. Because they're then gonna have to negotiate the trailer around the corner the other way to back all the way down. So the larger curb radius they have in that whole area there, the better for the trucks. Because then he won't be running over the curb as much and destroying the landscaping and everything else. So I questioned the thirty-foot throat right at the lot line to Aldi's. But in taking a second look at it, it makes sense to have that larger swing for that purpose. Straight truck wouldn't have any problem. But trying to back a trailer truck around there and negotiate all of that, giving all of the setback requirements you've got for landscaping buffers in the front and a twenty-four-foot travel aisle and a nineteen-foot parking space, frankly, they've probably done the best they can to get it all on the site.
I, oh, I, I don't have a problem with it. I'm just looking at that, that curb. I was wondering if that curb was back a little. Does that help a truck pulling in to maneuver around, but?
I don't see that it would help that much, John.
Okay. Well, that's fine. Good, good, good. Yeah, I think all in all, if that works out with you and your neighbor, then let's have at it.
So it's a good precedence.
What I, I'm not sure if you all have a copy of my letter, but one of the things I put in there was that we don't know right now what the final grades were on the Aldi site for this entrance. So I've asked that Mr. O'Hearn provide the grading and then to give the information to Baxter and I Engineering, who did the drainage design, to confirm that what they've got shown is adequate, that there aren't any, we're not gonna end up on this site getting a spillover runoff from that other road that we don't want.
Right.
So I'm awaiting that. I assume that as soon as he gets the information, he'll forward it to Baxter and I. They'll do their thing and get the information back to me. So.
Dick was out there Saturday and he has a meeting with Baxter and I tomorrow morning.
Excellent. Good.
So in order to address the other things in my letter as well as get that additional information, you probably are gonna have to continue your hearing for it.
So don't take no for an answer. Don't take no for an answer.
Don't take no for an answer. No.
No answer.
No.
Don't take no for an answer.
No, I was surprised when I looked there Saturday, the snow that was still there and the ice. And it didn't melt the whole day I was in. Not one drop of water. It was just solid ice the entire day. Where the mailbox was and the other landscaping, which I located all that. I had to dig out every, every shot I took along the curving to get a shot along that curving. Because that's where they piled all the snow up. It was a rough day.
Yeah, it would be.
So is that, is that, that was our main concerns?
Everything I'm saying, saying it's, it's too much for the site. It would be nice, I congratulate you and I hope you can pull off the connectivity with the neighbor. But I think it could benefit by a curb cut on the opposite end of the site. But everything is built up to the max right now.
Charlie, did you hear that?
I do, but I don't see-
George agreed with me on something.
I, I don't, I don't see where the real benefit of that will be. Because if a truck comes in there, he's still gonna be in the same spot. Whether he comes in from that point or he comes in from the north to get to the loading dock, he's gonna occupy the same space.
But he's not backing through the busiest part of their parking lot.
Yeah, one thing I would look at, and be with me for a minute. If you were to put that entrance in there, it would be staggered with the secondary entrance going into Walmart. And that, that difference would only be about forty feet. I think staggered entrances that close are not really recommended. I mean, they're either opposite each other or they're a hundred and twenty-five or fifty feet away from each other so that you don't end up with people making S-turns to get from one side of the road to the other.
Yeah, I, personally, I always liked the, the second way out. You know what I mean? If it's, it's just, you know, once I buy that cold beer, I don't wanna sit in three cars to get, I wanna get home and drink it, so.
You'd be heading out Toby Road throwing a nipple to one of them.
On the other hand, it might be better if you did sit there for a minute to-
Could be, yeah.
We actually considered a restricted in-access at that point for the delivery along the concept that you were talking of, about, but became convinced after some discussion that the greater risk is, you know, the jerks, quite frankly, who are gonna, who are gonna use that, that curb cut improperly.
Exactly, yeah.
And so it's, and it's gonna be, you know, we can sign it, but it's gonna be, as we all know-
Human nature don't read signs.
Right, right. And it, and they don't read them anyway. So it's, it's, in the end, I became convinced that we were, we were better off just leaving it closed off and to not, not even raise the idea with you folks. So, but you raised it on your own, so.
It brings up another issue, too. If you put that curb cut in there, in order to get the return radius in from the edge of pavement, put in a reasonable width so that a truck can get in there and negotiate that without running over the curb, it's gonna take up space. It means you're gonna have to move the dumpster. Where are you gonna put it? So when you look at all these things together.
Doesn't really work.
Well, I, I think we leave well enough alone. So on the building itself, were there any questions, guys, on the, on the building itself? Now, I had one question. Just the corner, so like with the entrance where you drive in, is there some, is there, is there like a glass entry or is there a, what does it look like? Is this it here, George?
It's, it's doors. So it's, it's sliding doors. So you'd walk into a vestibule.
That's it there.
This one, this is the, this is that corner as you drive in?
Yes.
I think if you look at the floor plan on the, it should be on this page.
You're in a vestibule like wines and more. You're locked in with-
I wouldn't say that, sir.
I mean, that, it creates that type of environment. Let me, let me think of another one here for a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that- It's an airlock, right?
I was just looking at what that corner of the building looked like. But that, as you drive in, as you drive in, I'm just looking at something attractive there. I mean, you know, you got your cape card look and what have you, but-
It's on two sides.
Yeah, no, the vestibule, I, I get you.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just, that's all I-
Right. And he's got a, designed there is a triangular area right off of that, which would, which would have, which would be landscaped to some degree.
To the front, yeah.
Yes. Yes.
No, I, I was just giving my two cents. I mean, when you, when you pull into a brand-new facility-
Right.
You know, unlike the dollar store that's up the other end of town, it's just blah mason, I mean, it's terrible. So the amount of money that people lay out, I, I'd just like to give my two cents. I'd rather you see it put like you're doing, like a nice glass entry, or, or as you drive in, you say, ah, nice, you know?
It's got multiple materials. If you look, it's got sort of a stone base and then sort of a claywood look, and then you've got shingle look above that and the, and the domed, so.
Yeah, no, I, I, I was, I'm pleased with it. I was just giving my two cents that I like a nice, you know, unlike some of the other buildings you get, it just, you say to yourself, you just spent all that money and you threw in a three-foot door. It doesn't make sense.
What is, what was going to be a request on the second sign?
So over the front, and then something on the- Yeah, I don't know. What's wrong with that?
So that's on both sides of the vestibule, then?
Correct.
What's wrong with that?
No, that, I'm in full agreement then.
The building inspector has jurisdiction over the square footage of the signs.
Right.
So long as it meets that code, I don't see anything wrong with it.
Yeah, they were like new, Alan worked on that for years, didn't he, the sign thing? I mean, I-
Well, in the bylaw, it's pages long.
Yeah.
He's the only one that can understand it?
Exactly. That's why he wrote it that way. I, I think all in all, it's fine, but you, 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 you signed bylaw, you gotta meet all that.
Correct. I actually looked at that today, so I don't think we'll have any problem meeting that, actually. It would be individually lettered signs with, you know, which I think will look nice. Generally, they do, so.
But you also have a curb set sign?
Free standing out front, yes.
That you may wanna take a look at only for location and make sure that, in this particular case, I don't think visibility will be an issue because you're coming out a lot further away from where the sign would be. But you might wanna just see-
Like the YMCA sign at the end of Chodge Pond Road, you gotta get out onto the highway to see what's coming?
Right. Yeah.
I fought that for years.
The only question I would have, George, if I may, on that end of the building where he's showing you the two signs now, the plans show that that whole facade on both sides of that corner push out two feet. So it squeezed up the sidewalk to something less than four. Is that an issue that perhaps they can respond to?
They're showing a six-foot sidewalk.
I know, but when you push that two feet out, now you've got maybe four feet. But that includes the, the curving there, too, as well. So I just wanna be sure that in terms of ADA requirements, that people can get around that corner if they want to. That's all.
I believe the ADA wants to see five-foot sidewalk, but I'm not sure.
Well, that's, I'm not sure what the dimension is, but-
That's a building department call.
The question that I had, though, was that it squeezes the sidewalk down around that entire corner from six feet to something much less than that.
I'm not sure that was the intention. I, I'm not sure. I'll have to take that up with the architect. I take your point and-
If you look at the plans and, and the dimensions that he shows on his foundation plan, and compare it to the scale of the elevations, there's an extra two feet there. So you need to look at that.
We have an elevation here?
All right, that's our fault. I guess it got lost in the shuffle, but I'll, I'll take that up with him right away.
Okay.
Oh. Is the new, the new plan, okay, so Dick's telling me the newest plan may, may be different. I'm not sure, but let's, let's look, let's-
I think these are the old, the old ones are first invented, admitted. It had the, there's an outstanding-
Well, it does mean, when you look at the sections, this is line C right here.
Yep.
That lines up with the foundation. So there's an extra two feet.
That shouldn't be.
Well, then we need to get new plans to show that, then.
That's all we have right there. Just ADA is not the thing you wanna stumble on, you know, so.
No, no, that, I mean, no, that, that wouldn't be the intent at all.
No, I understand, but-
Right.
Charlie's point, he, he catches all that stuff-
Absolutely, no, I'm, I'm glad he did, and I, I just- Knowing my architect, I don't, you know, he's, what he does is commercial buildings, I just, I don't think that would have been the intent, so. But if it's on the plan that way, we need to get it fixed.
Do you utilize a second story here at all, or is that all?
Fluff.
It's all fluff?
Correct.
There is, in the stockroom, I think, there's a mess, and you see stairs going somewhere.
Oh, in all, it's a good-looking building.
You think, George? See, all in all, it's not a bad-looking building.
No, it's not, but I still think it's too big for the size.
Too big for the, well, this is the problem. Everybody and their brother is the, let's go every inch. Through the forty-B, I mean, he's, he's a hundred and something parking space is short. Well, yeah, we don't need him. Well, you want all the bedrooms, and what if someone had a car? They gotta park it, right?
All in all, good, Charlie? I have to get the, my letter addressed. I had some other comments about there's landscaping that needs to be upgraded-
Yep.
And so forth, but it's gonna be depending on what they end up with, the grades around that new entrance now. Basically, it's not bad.
He's coming two feet back.
I don't, I don't think so, no.
This corner is, if C is correct, eighty, a hundred, a hundred and twenty.
No, if this is, if this is, if it's orthographic, it's, you know, A, B, C, and, and Charlie is right. You got two feet beyond the C-line. But also this, that's two feet here.
That could be.
It's not good. See, there, there's the two feet here.
Yeah, it's two feet.
It's possible that the C-line is in the wrong place here.
Will you hear when you approve this fieldstone circle of Ferringill Road?
That's a forty-B, right?
I don't know, is it?
It's like eight houses or something.
So there's a, there's a problem with the, with the drawing.
Yeah.
They used to be, they used to be apartment complexes there.
Yeah.
They'd all run down and then they got tore down.
And they built these, these forty-Bs. Why? What's, what's the question?
I don't, you remember that bird that was in front of us? He wanted to build one at two acres across from Perry's Ice Park.
Richard.
Nine units.
Right, which I was against. That's sixty feet wall-to-wall scale, sixty-two. I don't care what the building inspector says. You've got, you've got neighbors in that neighborhood came in to, to put in like an in-law apartment, and they rejected it, and now he's thinking, put all this in? That was a forty-B. But the elevation scaled sixty-two. And I think there's some problems with that, where some of these things are draining down onto Ferringill Road, to other properties. It was a big to-do.
The building is already two feet wider.
I think this has a common sceptic in the center.
This piece of the building is two feet wider, so it's self-screwed on their cats, so they'll fix it.
If it's sixty, if it's sixty, why do you think the roof was an I knew Mr. Bluefool?
I don't know, he didn't come back. No, we didn't approve, we didn't approve it.
The elevation's right here. I'm, I'm against it.
The elevation should end right here.
He didn't come, last time I was here, you were here.
That's the way it should. I will make sure that's done. My purpose, they missed it. When they were here that night, I stayed away the next meeting, 'cause I was gonna fight it. And I said, nah, I don't have, you know, the board's all for it.
Whenever the dimension is the three-sixteens-
The guy that wants to put the nine units down.
Uh, three-sixteens, yeah, God, that's even an oddball dimension there.
It's wrong. I don't, I don't care what you say. It's just wrong, Charlie.
Is, do you recall, is this a forty-B?
Ferringill, remember those?
Ferringill, that fieldstone circle. Probably about ten years ago. They tore down the apartments and put those single-family units in there.
They were going to. I don't think they did. I don't think that's a forty-B. I might recall it.
It didn't, I, I thought-
It's before my time.
I think that was, if I'm not mistaken, I, I thought that was one of the mandates, and so he went out. I can't remember.
Originally, it was a John San Angelo project.
Right.
Way back.
Yeah.
Kings Grant.
Yeah, that's before. Sixty by one-twenty, the elevation looks like it's two foot overhanging. We're not gonna have that overhang.
Then, then the drawing needs to change, because that's what you're-
I will certainly have, yeah, open tomorrow.
Okay.
The worst thing that'll happen is the ADA getting sidewalks now wide enough. What? Never heard of it. Okay. Yeah, see, the mistake is here.
So what happens to the old houses? They just-
Listen, watch, you know, demoing a building today is-
Can't just sell the whole things, huh?
They were moved there first.
Were they moved there? Yeah.
Yeah, they were moved there when, when one ninety-five came through.
They were moved somewhere else originally.
They were moved from twenty-eight. One was, the other one was built there.
Are these supposed to be the same?
Was it moved?
Levandowski's was, uh-
This, you say it's correct.
I think the white one's a better shoe.
That used to be a machine shop. I think I started off to be an architect. I have a degree in architecture. And I went back and looked, I was folding the table every day at the table, and I got a degree in civil engineering, okay?
So what are we gonna do here? We're gonna approve this?
Yeah.
I remember Billy's house was moved, yeah.
So what do we, what do we gotta do? We have to wait until Charlie gets the final plan and his letter addressed? But all in all, can we approve it? And waiting for those, or what, George?
We gotta finalize this driveway with the neighbor.
Yeah.
I had suggested in my comments on that, that once it is finalized, that they provide you with a copy of their easement documents and so forth, so you've got it for the file. And when it comes to a final decision, you may wanna give some consideration as to whether or not it should be considered adequate for any subsequent use. Now, if it's a change in use, then you get to look at the site plan again to make sure it's okay. But consider whether or not you wanna limit what's being shown to this particular facility, because it's gonna have limited traffic. There won't be a lot of traffic coming in and out of here.
Is there anything to be gained by taking that existment, existing cut from Toby Road? And moving it closer to their corner?
No, because everything that they've got sort of lines up with what they have for a driveway that goes down back. I don't think shortening it up-
No, I'm just wondering if, if straightening the driveway for the neighbor's property, if straightening that out was, might be a negotiating point here, that-
Probably the, the least amount of readjustment, the better. Don't forget that that entire site is subject to a special permit by the Board of Appeals. So whether or not this rearrangement affects that special permit is something that maybe they should look into as well, just to be sure. It's a minor thing, but nevertheless, the permit was issued without any consideration for an adjoining parcel coming into that driveway. So I think probably from that perspective, the least amount of adjustment you do, the better. But I still think they ought to confirm that the ZBA doesn't have a problem with it, 'cause it's an outstanding special permit, so.
The only thing on that particular point is, is the looking at your bylaw under site plan review. Directly within your purview is convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjacent areas. So it would seem that the concept of marrying these two properties is directly within your purview. That, that's the way I would read the bylaw.
We always try to get some sort of connectivity. It's, it's great when you can pull it off.
Well, as we all know, it's, it's much more common in other states. We don't, you know, I don't know if we don't get along as well up here, or what it is, but it's, it's difficult to achieve in a lot of cases, so. And it does work. I mean, it, it tends to work well when, when it's used, so.
The difference here is that although the planning board recommends it, and I see the benefit of it as well to go along with them, it was another board of the town that issued the special permit.
For the abutter.
The other butter. So his, his property is tied to that special permit.
That would be pretty unfair to throw us down a pathway that now the abutter has to go in and somehow get approval, readjustment of his special permit? How is that gonna work? We can't apply for that relief. It's, it would be them, which-
That's true, but you-
Which is probably gonna be an impediment to this deal. If, if I tell them, oh, by the way, you, you gotta, you gotta throw your, you know, your, whatever you, your relief, whatever relief you obtained from the Board of Appeals, you gotta, you gotta go throw that on the table and, you know, in order to make this happen.
I don't mean to-
I understand.
It becomes an impediment. I'm not trying to say that. I'm just throwing the information out there.
No, I, I-
Could they, could they view that as minor?
They could. They could very well say it's, it's a minor thing and, you know, it's no big deal, and it is to the benefit of everybody. They could very well say that.
I'm not even sure, well-
If we could get some connectivity the other way, I think it would eliminate a lot of the stress on your site. So do you think-
Ultimately, I guess the planner will have to decide on that, on that issue, but that's something we'll have to take up between this meeting and if there's gonna be a next meeting.
Take it up with Ken. Take it up with Ken.
Unless you guys are willing to approve this subject to conditions tonight. Wow, wouldn't that be nice? But, yeah, okay, so. I'd be remiss if I didn't throw out that option.
Had to give it a shot.
Yeah, why not?
You're looking for an agreement on that? What else are we looking for?
Ken can write a letter to zoning and suggest that this should be considered a minor- Modification. Modification. Ken can do that pretty quick, I think.
Look, it could be a jurisdictional issue, and I'm not so sure if they really have jurisdiction over it. I think you have jurisdiction over it. So I'm, I'm, I don't, I don't really see how they would have, I don't, I don't-
It's a fine, it's a fine line.
Well-
Because you, you, you're taking your individual application, and the board as a whole looks at a safety issue, and they say, well, it'd be better if we go to here. You need to go to the, to the abutter and see what you can work out. You did that. Then there's always that little caveat that theirs is under a special permit. He kinda needs to keep an eye. Well, yeah, I'm gonna let you do this. I don't have a problem with it, but what does it do to his? I.e., Ken can get ahold of the zoning board and see it's a minor modification. It's a vote-type thing, and you're done, so you're better to ask than, so. But I, I think Ken can, I think Ken can, can kinda handle-
Replace the star.
He can handle that, so. Okay, so what are we?
I'm a little puzzled as to, it seems to be a conflict with what is going to happen between the edge of pavement and the road layout. It appears as though the neighbor continued all the way out. With landscaping all the way out to the edge of pavement?
Landscaping can only go as far as the lot line, George.
So what'd they do? Just run their curb out to their?
Well, they have to tie the curb into the existing edge of pavement, which is what they did.
Mm-hmm.
That's what Aldi's did. That's what you do in each-
That's what you do in each case.
Yeah, and then they'll just cut it out.
They had a curb cut permit that they got from, uh, municipal maintenance and they installed that curb and then they put the pavement out there. So that part's all done. It's got the top course of mix and everything.
Did they have loam and seed in that area or land, landscaping or what? It's just not.
It's not finished because that's a part of the, the portion that they secured, uh, by posting a bond. The landscaping is not fully completed yet.
Mm-hmm.
So, and that includes the landscaping out to, uh, the loam and seed that would go right out to the edge of pavement. Be just like Walmart did across the street.
Well, that's kind of my point, that Walmart didn't complete theirs down to their property line.
No, they didn't, and that was a part of the original plans and I questioned why they didn't do that during the construction, but it wasn't done.
That's your landscape plan.
I think, I think what happened though, um, the town recently was in there and they did an overlay for the pavement in that area. When they got done, I believe they spread loam and seed on the shoulders in that portion. It wasn't done by Walmart. Mark, you go by it every day. Do you recall that?
Describe, which, which area are we talking about now?
Oh, this area that's down, down next to the secondary entrance into Walmart. There was a strip in here that, that Walmart never put any loam and seed against it because they weren't working out there. They put the limit of work back as far as their parking area.
Yeah.
So they left the area between here and the edge of pavement.
Yeah, still not done.
That still isn't done? Because I thought that the town did some loam and seed adjustment. I know they did on this side. When they re, when they repaved it last year. I remember seeing the truck in there a couple of times. But in any event, anything that's disturbed on this site, you know, the landscaping will go to the lot line, but, uh, loam and seed and around the curbing there that you're talking about, George, will go to the edge of pavement. You're going to have to take out, you've got two or three existing driveways that, that are going to come off this site and they have to clean that up. Loam and seed that area and restore it to make it look like this. So, um, there'll be some loam and seed out there.
So two weeks, presuming Ken can issue a letter to the zoning board. As a minor change. The surveying's done to get you the elevations you need. We can wrap these fellows up at the next meeting? Is that the direction we're moving in?
I would hope so.
I will probably not be present for the next meeting, so. Providing you have the quorum. It's district beating night. If we're over in an hour, I'll be off. Something tells me it won't be done in an hour though.
Will be around, John? That is a huge, huge day in history. Yes, I'll make it.
What's the day? April Fool's?
No.
Supposed to be his anniversary.
The ninth. It all began on the ninth.
Is that your scheduled date of release, sir?
That's it. You don't have a roof plan, do you?
Roof plan? My God. Um, other than what's on the elevation, no, but, uh, we can, we can create one. Thanks, Charlie.
It's just difficult to figure out all these form shapes, how they relate.
Is it going to be a flat roof with this, with a facade?
It'll be a facade, right. The center will be, will be flat.
All the HVC units will be out of plant site?
That's the hope. Hope is we go up with them, yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Think you'll have this resolved by April ninth?
Hopefully. That would be the goal.
Yeah.
If you receive us, we'll get it done.
You have a meeting with the abutter, what, tomorrow?
I have, um, no, we have a meeting with the, um, drainage.
Engineer, okay.
But no, I can, I can contact the abutter anytime, but, I mean, they're just reviewing the paperwork at this point.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, I'm sure they'll, I'm sure they'll have comments, but, uh.
Well, I would imagine.
Your demo permit's all approved?
No, it, it wasn't able to be applied for because everything, uh, my contractor's on vacation this week, but he just was able to finish everything up, uh, the end of last week, so he couldn't get a gap. But he's going to do that first of next week.
All right, I'll, I'll bring him coffee when he starts.
There's nothing, uh, historical there, so shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, I'm over at Blackmore Pond, so I come up there every day.
So I'd look for a motion to continue to April ninth?
So moved. I'll second that.
Discussion. Any other guidance for the applicant?
Hurry up.
All in favor?
Aye. Hurry up.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate the comments.
Do, do you need these back?
No.
This is done on CAD, right?
I'm sure it is.
Yeah, when, when you come back.
Or some architectural program.
Yeah, when, when you come back and they just do a three D so we can see how the forms relate.
Sure.
Because it's a, it's a complex structure and it'd be, it would be interesting to see how they relate really that complex.
Be happy to.
Sure, sure. And if they use SketchUp, they can even put color on.
Color?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't request it.
Loves, uh, using his toys, so I mean, you know.
I think I met your father years ago.
You probably did.
And I used to know him.
Thank you.
I used to go to pick him up.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Next, we have recommendations to make for Woodland Cove. Which is a forty B proposed the corner of Cranberry Highway and Redford. Way too many units. Way too crowded piece of property.
What was the verdict on the impact to the infrastructure?
Don't know. On Woodland Cove?
Yeah.
Still in the.
It's, it'll stand in the discovery state for that.
Jury is still out on that.
Yeah.
There are a hundred and sixty something parking spaces short, Charlie?
They're a bunch short. Their application, I'll, I'll try and give you a summary as best I can. Their application listed, I think, thirty-six requests for waivers from either the subdivision rules and regs and/or zoning. And almost in each and every one, they requested a full waiver without any explanation as to why they can't comply with at least a portion of it. That was one of the things I put in my comments, that you've asked for all these waivers, but you haven't said why you need the waiver or why if you comply with the, um, project according to the bylaw, it would make it unaffordable for you to do. So that's one of the things that the board will be looking for in terms of information. But that's only one thing.
Right. A thirty-six waivers is, is, uh.
That's a lot.
It's a lot.
They did do, they asked for a waiver from complete landscaping, but when you looked at the landscape plan, which consists of three sheets, it looks like it's pretty complete. So why are we asking for a waiver? I, I don't quite understand it.
Because they're, because they're going to throw a little hydro seed down and that's all you'll ever get.
Well, if it goes into the special permit that it has to conform to the plan, then I would expect, you know, if I happen to be the one to do the inspections and they look for a COC, landscaping isn't done, COC shouldn't be issued. But it's, it's a well documented plan that they have for the landscaping, so in my view, I don't see why they need the waiver for that.
Okay.
But there's a whole bunch of other stuff. They're asking for waivers from even getting a permit from municipal maintenance for the curb cuts.
Yeah.
So lot one, they're saying a hundred and twenty-two backing spaces required and they're providing seventy-two.
Yeah, I, I didn't bring my big plan with me, but I did a, a summary of those. Their phasing plan is pretty wild. This is, this is lot one to here. That's this, and that's what they propose to do first. Yeah, that's, that's my breakdown of what they're missing.
Right.
The second phase, this is the old Starlight Motel.
It's kind of rolling.
That would go, and this becomes then the second phase, like this. Including these two buildings and a community building here and this. It's not a part of phase one, so if all they do is phase one, there's no, there's no.
There's no, no recreation. There's, so that, that middle there, Charlie, is that a recreation area? This, this big circular?
This thing is here. This entire portion is dedicated to recreation, except they've got two, um, surface stormwater disposal areas right here.
On the edge, yeah.
With an underground system that is in here next to it, and then an ultimate discharge in this area, which goes over onto Onset Fire District property.
Okay.
When you look at the number of spaces that they've asked for, parking spaces and compare that to the regulation, if you were to go by the regulation just for building A alone, it would take all of these and all of these.
Right.
And if you did it for building two, it would take all of these plus all of these.
Okay.
So when you get done with this, there's not enough parking spaces.
No, you're a hundred and sixty short according to what we call for and what they're offering.
I did a, a breakdown, building by building, based on the number of single units. They have a number of single bedroom apartments, a few threes, and most of them are twos. So it's one and a half spaces for a single bedroom unit and two bedrooms up is two, two spaces per unit. So when you do the calculation for number of units that's in each bedroom, in each building, you get a total that would be required of a hundred and twenty-one spaces just for this building. They only require, uh, require seventy-two on their plan.
Yeah.
So they're shy by forty-nine spaces according to the zoning by law.
For that building.
So when they're calling these lots, is that for phasing or is this a subdivision plan?
It's, they're calling, they have a plan in here that's called their subdivision plan, in which they are creating one, two, three, four lots.
By, by different people.
Well, they're going to create the lots.
Yep.
Then one entity is going to pick up lot one.
Right.
They're going to build lot one, and then somewhere along the line, they're going to buy lot two. And put that under another entity.
Yeah, so it's.
Then the next thing is they'll buy lot three at the end.
So, so if something starts to fail, one lot can stand on its own by itself, basically?
No, it's, they're flipping it for their pro forma.
Yeah. The problem that I have.
If it didn't happen though.
The problem that I have is that.
Where's your frontage for lot three?
There is none. They're claiming that because it's a forty B, they don't need it.
Oh, that's not true.
And the fact, the fact that it doesn't show on these plans, but they've got a temporary cul-de-sac, it may be later on in the plan set, right here. For phase one. Well, it's not even in phase one. It's over here.
Yeah. Charlie, how did it, we, we fought? I fought two of them because I went up to the Sultan Stall building, uh, twice. Mary Scaziotti went with me, God rest her soul. She was a bulldog with those people. And what it came down to, well, the one, the one, um, that we beat is, is the one where the welding shop just went across from Perry's. Remember that? Grossman's used to be. Because they did not have control of the site. They, they, they purchase and sale, they, they, they didn't get both parcels or whatever. Is that going to be the same situation here where they're saying we'll buy lot two after we do lot one and we'll buy lot three after we do? Well, then you don't have control of the site for the, for the two hundred and sixteen units out of the gate. Am I right or am I, am I misspeaking? Am I, am I getting that wrong?
No, I, I think you're right. I'm not an attorney on it, so I can't speak other than what I read, but that is the consensus.
But we beat two of them on that. The, the forty B guy who had never done a forty B on that one on where the welding shop went in across from Perry's, that was the reason he lost where, where that, they call themselves the Housing Appeals Committee. Well, they're, they're just a bunch of zipper heads that are in a room, but they had to agree with us. They said, well, you don't own it. How can you build on it? Well, once we buy this half, he's going to sell us the other half. I said, well, where does it say that? So the way I was reading your terminology through your, through your letter, Charlie, George, I think we're going to have a, an issue or zoning's going to have an issue that if they, if they, flipping it for their pro forma is one thing, but, but they're showing three lots with, with three phases that they don't own yet.
It is in the purchase and sale. The way that the purchase and sale is written up, it's, it's all in there.
It includes it as.
Includes they're in the whole purchase and sale, but it happens not at the same time.
Well, but, well, that's my point. My point is you, you don't, they don't have control of the entire site for the amount of what they're presenting. You follow me? So phase one comes up and it becomes a fiasco. They see you later. I'm not dumping any more money in the phase two.
So this is a subdivision plan?
That is a subdivision plan for lot one, two, and three.
Three.
This, the owner of this property is reserving for himself as a future commercial lot. It's not a part of the development.
Okay, so what, what do we do with frontage for lot one? Do they have it, Charlie?
They've got a hundred and six feet in the, in the
Strip commercial.
Strip commercial, which is less than a hundred and fifty, which you require. There's no frontage for this one.
Okay, well, that, but that, but that's a separate one. So lot two, what do they have for frontage for lot two?
Uh, one thirteen plus thirty-six. They're close to one fifty.
So, so that one we squeak by with, with whatever, but the hundred and, they, they don't have that either, George.
So.
They got their hands full.
You'll, you'll never see this.
Oh, I'm going.
Oh, I know, but as far as the planning board is concerned, you'll never see it to sign.
Gotcha. No, the Board of Appeals will, yeah.
And, you know, that, that aspect of it is, is probably out of your hands.
Well, no, not when I go to the meeting. Not when I go to their meeting.
Oh, okay.
George, I.
The one thing they're, one thing they're.
Can forty B waive subdivision requirements?
Yes.
And I, and I think as long as they have this in a purchase and sales agreement, because I, I did discuss this with the fellow that was doing the master plan, they're good to go. That's all they need is the, the, as long as the intent is in writing, that won't be a, a factor to stop them.
The only thing that's in the purchase and sale which did not get changed is their plan shows a hundred and seventy-four units. The P and S is for two sixteen.
Yeah.
So, you know, they'll have to work that stuff out with the numbers, but the thing that.
The plan is two sixteen, but the P and S is what? How many?
The P and S is two sixteen.
Is two sixteen.
Plan is one seventy-four.
Plan, one seventy-four.
So does that now make their parking lots a subdivision roadway?
Yeah, if you want to con, uh, consider it that, yes. That's what they're considering. That's what they're saying it is.
So it has to be built to a different standard?
Nope. No, it's going to be the same standards. They haven't reduced the standards for the width of pavement, thickness of pavement. Their parking.
Different than a parking lot would be, is what I meant.
It's about the same.
Is it?
Yeah.
Other than the roadway, though, you need twelve inches of the, of the crushed gravel and then the, the three, the three.
Oh, okay. I'm just, I haven't gone through it. I'm just.
Yeah, just. But where, the, where, the plan with the actual layout, is that this one?
Next page, I think.
Where, where are, this, this is for two sixteen right now?
No, one seventy-four.
This is one seventy-four?
Yeah.
If they were to eliminate one building altogether, is there then enough parking? What, what does each building account for, for parking?
Oh, I just, yeah, I just. Oh, I just, yeah, I just put in twenty-two. It's right there on the plan. Yeah, so, so, uh.
They're, they're looking at a total of two hundred and sixty. If you were to add everything up, you'd need over three hundred.
Yeah.
So a reduction of one building will balance out the parking.
I haven't looked at it, that was a fact.
Well, I'm just looking at.
Should we make note of the lack of frontage and all that in their notes, so it's on the record?
I would. That's, that's the kicker.
The one thing which is interesting about the commercial lot though, this plan shows how they're going to redo Cranberry Highway. Right now, when you come down Red Brook Road, you got a stop sign and then you scoot right out. This is gonna become a signalized intersection, where there'll be signals here. If you wanna make a right-hand turn, there'll be a signal in here which will scoot out here. If you wanna make a left-hand turn, you come to here and you stop. It's gonna be, according to the plan, there's sidewalks and stuff, and, and it looks like this is also gonna be an area where you'd make a U-turn to come back.
Right.
So you can see what complications that prevents for the, presents for the frontage on this lot. Where's his access gonna be? And since it's a separate lot, that'll come back to you, of course, I kind of view.
I agree with you, yeah.
I mean, that's gonna be a nightmare there.
I can't imagine how many stations that'll have.
In my view, it ought to be a part of the whole project and come out here, but they've not included it. So you can't consider it now, other than the fact that in the future, it's gonna be a pain in the neck for everybody.
No, it almost looks like they've designed it to tie in over here, so.
Yeah. Well, maybe. That's yet to be seen.
Well, it's yet to be seen, but I mean, they're, they're showing a hard line there right now, so we should bring that up.
It's the lot line, and that's, yeah, that's where it would, maybe it would end up there. The problem with this is.
That's different ownership than the Hadley property?
Yeah. Problem with this one is, it's gonna end up being right turn in, right turn out only.
Right.
You can't make a left turn turn, cause there's gonna be a raised island right across the front of that.
Yep.
So anybody wanting to leave here, wanna go that way, you can't. You're gonna have to come out somewhere else, or get in and come all the way around.
Unless you're in one of Mike's trucks, you just go right over the island.
What's this gonna be right here?
That's the old Hadley's boat shop. That's not a part of it. It's not a part of it.
So that stays, and then this, and then this future lot stays for commercial as well, so. Okay, so I just go back to, to looking at what we have here for apartments. You've got from one seventy-four to two hundred and sixteen of them. And that's the only recreation area is in the middle of all the parking lot. They send the kids out to the back.
Which is not a part of Phase One at all. So if the only thing that ever gets done is Phase One, and the rest of this property reverts back to the owner.
Yeah.
He gets this, right up to the phase line.
Yeah.
And there's no room for any recreation whatsoever for these two buildings.
Okay, so.
The recreation area should be phased with the.
So the recreation, it's contingent on the whole thing getting built out, basically?
Lot One should get a third, Lot Two, a third, and Lot Three.
Yeah.
So it doesn't disappear completely.
Depending on what it is, um, I have a concern about these two areas.
Yeah, because that, how can, that drainage has to be contributed by this strip over here, so they would have to build some of this out.
It is. Well, if, yes, they will. That'll get built out. Um, if you go to one or the other, you'll see what the phase, Phase One plan is.
Phase One.
This is Phase One. This is what they would presumably build for Phase One, in terms of drainage. There's one drainage basin.
Yeah.
The subsurface infiltration here.
Yep.
This piping down in here, and a biotension area here with a spillway that goes out.
That, that, this, this is Phase Three though, isn't it?
It is Phase Three, but all of this, all of this infrastructure.
So they, they already own this property?
No, they'd have to have an easement over this as a part of Phase One in order to do all of this, because they won't own it at the time.
Right.
They do have some very quirky language in the P and S that says, together with easements and so forth.
Right.
So it, in, I suppose if, if the attorney sees my comment, he's saying, oh, well, we've already got that, we've got the language that wants us to do the easements.
I hate lawyers.
This gets done along with that.
So it's only the two buildings for Phase One? I thought the third one went with it, but it doesn't. So it's just the two.
Two here, two here, and then two here. Oh, one here and one there.
Yeah, I think it's too many. I think it's way too many.
I mean, but the, can we have them change the sequence? I, I don't, I don't quite understand what the, for my construction means and methods.
Mm-hmm.
It, it would make sense to me to circulate counterclockwise. You're gonna do this to jump over to this side? You're, you're going to be disturbing this area in the center.
Mm-hmm. But not during this phase.
But they're gonna go through that parking lot to build the others?
When they go to Phase Two, first thing they're gonna be is taking out this old motel. Then they'll be coming in here as the construction instruments for Two.
But twenty-eight's gonna be built by then, so they're gonna be using.
Maybe. The takings, the problem that we have right now too, is that the takings, the way I understand it, had not been made.
Correct. And there's a lot of.
Oh, so they're talking another couple of years.
So if there's no takings made, then we, they don't, at this point in time, have to worry about the islands in the middle. They just put a, a road out there and they can go either way they want.
Look at what they're gonna end up with.
Oh, I know.
What are they banking on? The value of that property going up?
Probably.
Is it?
But thi- this is a separate entity from the rest of this.
They didn't, they didn't make an offer on that piece of property?
I don't know whether they did or didn't. I don't know.
All right, well, needless to say, phasing wise, so they put the two buildings on the right with that piece of roadway, but there's no recreation area for those two.
Right.
None. All right, so see, I have a problem with that.
But common area does not convey with the phasing of the lots.
Right.
When you look at the second phase, uh, there's a note on there that says that there's a temporary connecting driveway between Phase Two and Phase One, which runs across here.
Right, right. Which they'll disturb when they do Phase Three, but that's, but at that point, um, I, I don't like it. I, I agree with Mark. I think the phasing should change, but that's, that's, zoning can pick up on all that, but.
If, if it's a concern of the board, you need to write it down and get it to them as a concern.
Well, I, I, I would think, George, that the phasing is a problem, because if you're gonna have a temporary drive from one to two and then build three, what happens to the drive, you know, at, at that time? You, you're, you're gonna be landlocking, number one.
One, one thing that they've done with this subsurface drainage system here is that they've got a note here that says that for Phase One, maybe smaller than the number shown, suggesting that they may only do this, so they don't have to put this whole thing in right now.
Well, they, they, yeah, well, that's, that's what I'm getting at.
How are they, how are they, is, is that, are it sewn one?
No, it's sewn two.
Didn't know how close it was to their wells. How are they getting off using that as an overflow for their drainage?
Well, it isn't. It's a, it's a spillway. Everything is built here, but if you look at the topography, this is a low point. There's, there's a low point on the plan which is sort of like this in here.
Mm-hmm.
This remains the low point, and the low point goes from here right to San Pond. So any overflow from this, if it does happen, which they've calculated for the hundred-year storm, and they say it spills over a little bit, in my view, it shouldn't just spill over at all.
At all, yeah.
I mean, why should it go anywhere over here, except the stormwater regulations say that if you've got an existing stormwater flow that goes on to somebody else, so long as you don't exceed that flow, you're okay.
Yeah.
So they make up for, for putting infiltration and everything, and so they can still allow some to go out here. The problem I have with doing anything that allows it to go out, and even going subsurface on the ground, is that when you get this number of units, you know what the potential is for dumping stuff down catch basin drains and things like that, solvents, you don't know what's gonna go in that. I'm assuming the hydraulic gradient for the, for the groundwater is towards San Pond, and obviously toward their well field.
Yep.
When they draw in their wells, their zone of confluence or influence is gonna spread out the more they draw. It's gonna be right toward that.
Yep.
So, in my comments, I've asked them to show what the potential would be for controlling those other kinds of things, which could independently impact their well.
Yeah.
That's a serious thing for them.
Yeah, it is. Not many people changing their oil.
And the wells, the wells are over here somewhere, in terms of distance away. But if the hydraulic gradient of the groundwater is flowing in that direction, and it's not a soluble kind of thing, it, it gets mixed in with the water and it dissipates. Does it do? I don't know.
Makes my water taste funny at the other end of town.
It's costing you twelve million bucks, I would get it to taste that good.
What is I'm trying to water the district's jar anyways?
This, this is part of Phase One?
Nope. It's a house lot.
Yeah, that's a different thing.
Separate house lot.
How, how far?
It's gotta be a reason they're doing this second. Is it, is it because of the curb cut over here? No, this hotel's got the curb cut.
There's a big. I was gonna say, the big hole is over here, the wet one's issue. Probably to keep this in operation as long as possible, so they're giving, previous owner will have an income.
So Charlie, the, the, the plan is for the, the, this plan shows the hundred and seventy-four?
Yes.
Okay. So, but the P and S is for two sixteen?
Correct.
But you haven't seen a revised plan for the two sixteen?
No. They've had several extensions for time, because the time period for the P and S run out, and then they extended for another six months. They've done that about five times.
Well, I understand that.
They haven't changed the number in the.
No, but what I'm getting, well, the P and S has two sixteen, but you, the plans that we're, that you're reviewing and that we're gonna look at as the general public, cause I'll be going to that, uh, from, from here, is, is, um, is one seventy-four, not two sixteen.
That's right.
So, when are you gonna see plans showing that?
Well, I don't, I don't think, they originally had.
Well, if it's approved at one seventy-four, they'll go back to their buyer and say, look, we can't get two sixteen.
They originally had two sixteen when they went to the state.
Okay.
And they reduced it down again, and I think, uh, Peter Tye Blom wrote a letter to the state saying that they never advised us that they were changing the number.
Right.
And so they said they needed a new submittal. I don't know the technical aspects of all of that stuff. But, to make a long story short, now they're dealing with a hundred and seventy-four units. Not two sixteen.
All right, but zoning hasn't taken up with them yet that we want units cut down.
That's correct.
The selectmen can write all the letters they want, but they, they.
It's still under negotiation. There hasn't even been a hearing with the Board of Appeals yet to discuss the density.
I shall attend those, Charlie. I hate fortyBs equally, all of them.
Of course, there's no discrimination.
None. None. Ken Ferrera, if he was sitting here with you, he would say, George, Cronin beat two of them. We did, we beat their brains, and then that one lawyer, Paul Glynn was his name, and he sat at that for months, George, for months, and every night I'd say to him, when he got here, I said, did you sell it yet? Did you sell it yet? And he'd say, why do you? I'd say, nah, you're an attorney. You're gonna sell it the night you get the permit. I should've bet him the penny, Charlie, because he signed it, well, it was the basement next door. You know how you went up the, the two stairs and the ramp? The guy met it with the top of the ramp and they signed it against the wall. He bought it the night that we signed the thing. He sold it. I said, I should've bet you the penny. He said to me afterwards, he says, you know, he says, you made me feel real bad. Don't feel bad, I says. You know why they bury lawyers ten feet deep? I says, cause deep down under, you're all good guys. And I remember his name and I can see his face. And that was the first one. Lion pieces of crap. Remember Matt Dacey? Do you remember the Dacey Brothers?
Oh, you have to read this one, E.T. thirteen.
He, he almost went to prison. Sixty-two percent profit on one complex he did, cause he was the painter, he was the carpet guy, he was the roofer, he was all separate entities, and but it's, but he was like the president of all the companies. Like I said to him one day, I says, how stupid can you be? I says, put it in your sister's name, put it in your brother's name, make a deal with Charlie, put some in his name. I said, you put it all. He's, well, it's all mine. I said, yeah, but you can't make that kind of profit on a, on a floating.
Oh, yes, of course, of course.
What kind of a glow are we gonna get from this place?
Greek, Greek word. I should've, Greek words. I should've known that.
Well, they're saying that there's no spillover from the intensity, but they haven't given us an example of what kind of.
Listen, when I load your pocket with some cash, all the structural genes, and you don't care about the rules, and you don't need anybody's opinion. He said to me one night, I was walking him through one of his deals, and I says, you know, and he said, you, what's your point? I said, my point is, if you just listen.
Because they don't have any of their outside lights on, you know?
And they're fighting you on the wrong reasons. I says, but now that you take that attitude, they fight you on the other reasons, and he didn't get half of what he wanted.
Has Onset Water made any comments, or?
They haven't made any comments yet. They're aware of it and, um.
So I think densities are pretend that would be.
Phasing. And, and, uh, frontage. So they're aware of it.
Lack of frontage.
Lack of, well, that's what I'm saying, the three things I think.
They're also asking for information from the.
They wouldn't like to with all this cash.
Well, they, I know their water calculations, their usage are under, underestimating the daily usage, the daily discharge.
Between Halifax.
I haven't seen any of that.
Remember Hollywood East?
No.
Used to be right in the main drag.
That's a fairly aggressive landscaping plan.
The guy died.
So, why does this differ from.
From Wood East.
Yeah, we're trying to picture it.
Can you know what a tractor place was?
Questions we have.
The garden, garden tractors? If you was, if you went to Walmart, you took a left.
Yeah.
It was a garden tractor.
Unless this guy here was playing to buy them out.
Oh shit. Uh, D.I.P. died in Dennis from DMC.
Strip mall or something there.
That has control of a building. If you run a ton business.
Convenience store, you got seven hundred customers behind you.
What's he got, like twenty cars? I mean, you can see the amount of landscaping they're putting in here, and they're putting.
He could give you an apple for an orchard any day.
We have too many.
You know, the kids are gonna run, they're gonna run over to here.
Shall we ask for prison fencing around?
They've made some sort of.
Audio quality is going away. Use the microphones if you're gonna talk.
Yeah, we've got too big a plan set.
I did, I did email out the, sir. My letter today, it's one of your.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you giving me it. I, I didn't, I got your letters the other day, but I didn't get this one.
A ton of them, but they wanted everything, so I threw in everything.
Well, what I wrote, two of the three, two of the three lots have inadequate or no frontage. The common area does not convey with the lots. Not enough parking. They need to explain their waivers, which you pointed out, and the runoff treatment of stormwater from the parking lots. Should be some sort of treatment.
What they have is, uh, they've got treatment for what they call total suspended solids. All it is is a grit remover.
They should have a, they should have a gas trap or something.
Uh, there are gas traps shown in the catch basin, so if, if somebody drops, if you have a fuel spill or something.
But if they don't maintain it before the next rainfall.
Yeah, and they've given no information about, um, protecting that. There's, there's a pretty aggressive operation maintenance plan that they've got shown in their narrative and everything.
Mm-hmm.
It's in the stormwater regulations. Which if they put it into effect, uh, might be okay. Both three different entities is going to possibly.
Exactly.
And with the number of units you've got, you're not gonna have any control over what goes into those catch basins or into the stormwater control inlets or anything. And, you know, protection announced their well field, cause they're only well field.
They'll be buying water from one year.
And phasing, George, did you mention phasing?
The motel goes, the motel goes.
Yes, yeah, that's.
John, I used to stand a whole, years ago, when I used to work up there, seeing a guy change oil, pull over a catch basin.
Yeah.
Put one tire on a curb, pull the drain plug.
Right down the drain, that, hey, I used to see it, like, in, in, in the city, I grew up in the city, that's, everybody did. You'd, they'd pull up on the curb and it, some of them used to drain it right into the gutter and. That's what they did. That's what they did.
They say it's good for mosquito control.
Yeah.
Charlie, do you know, what, what percentage of these first two units is affordable housing?
Forty-B. I forget where the percentages are. It's pretty high.
For the first two?
I mean, it's spread throughout. Uh, the number of, uh, say, one bedroom and two unit, two bedroom units is about spread evenly. Um, I forget which two. I think the two that are over here are four stories tall. The rest of them are three.
Yeah. Is it, well, is it twenty-five percent?
Supposedly it will get the percentage, you know, we're supposed to have ten percent affordable housing.
Yeah, you're not, you're not gonna get it. Well, if, if, if all these units counted, you, you're right, but.
They count because at any given time, they could be occupied by a qualifying tenant.
But how many legitimately, is that your question? How many legitimately are, are counted?
If you call one of the last one that was built.
Yeah.
You know, even when it was still in the framing process, they, oh, we don't have any affordable units. You know, even when it was still in the framing process, they, oh, we don't have any affordable units available. Which doesn't make any sense, 'cause the affordable rate's higher than market rates.
I, I guess, I guess what I'm, I'm driving at here now is, i- if it never makes it beyond phase one, did we even put a dent in getting to the ten percent of affordable housing?
No.
So, so my feeling is that th- they have to show us a success model that gets us to the nine percent that they're promising us out of this unit.
That's what you get out of the whole thing.
Right. But if we don't get to the whole thing, it all becomes a grand waste of time. Because the whole, the whole forcing this down our throat is to get us to this ten percent of affordable housing. And they, they don't, I don't think they have a success plan to get us there.
Do they have, have they submitted a management agreement, how these three entities are gonna work together?
No.
Can we request that?
Uh, yes. That was, that was one of Mary's things that she used to fight. Well, your management plan, though, as soon as you start to build them, they might be leasing these things, you know, coming, 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 and on the run a waiting list, whatever. There's gotta be some sort of management plan of who's who.
Well, I, I assume so, and, and I would.
I'd put it on there, George.
How this is gonna work, but it's, it's gonna have to come somewhere.
I'd put it on a list of questions, George.
A special permit has over that kind of thing. I don't think.
I, I, I think they do. I mean, she fought, uh, and, and I can see her sitting there doing it. Uh, she fought them on, on the lea- on the leases and, and the way they had things set up for, um, uh, some, some of them were gonna be condos, and some of them were gonna be apartments, and she was, she was in the midst of all their paperwork, and, and it worked. And, and those housing people said, well, yeah, you gotta tell them. How, how are you managing it? How are you selling some and not, and, and renting others, and you know what I mean? Um, so, yeah, I think you're right, George. You probably oughta just ask the question, or put it on our list, the management clauses, and then it's in there.
But also, if it never makes it beyond phase one, what is the maintenance agreement? On this, this overflow retention?
I have to assume, because it's not written anywhere right now, that when he takes ownership of one, and if it's according to this set of plans, they would get an easement to build this cul-de-sac, this portion of the drainage, and this outlet structure, and this structure down, and they'd get an easement to do that over lot three.
But, but then, phase one owner is responsible for the maintenance?
Again, that's a question which hasn't been answered yet. It's a good question.
Yeah. Because that, because then it, be, yeah. So, so phase two is contingent on a successful phase one?
Yes.
And phase three never gets done if we don't get this to phase two?
At this point, right. See.
I would request the deed restriction be placed on the entire thing prior to a bill implement.
How are you gonna do that with three separate houses?
I mean, they're asking for increased density on the whole site. They should make the commitment, in my mind. It doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah, I agree with you. Put it on there. Yeah, I, I agree, George. All you can do is ask them. Then again, if zoning takes it and asks, they ask. If they don't, they don't, but, um, does zoning have a lawyer on this? Do they have anybody involved?
Yeah, um, so far, the, the discussion that's involved in has basically been the, um, technical procedural portions of, of the.
Right.
Hearing process. Haven't gotten into the detail of it immediately, but the concept that you're asking now. That would be important for.
Who would they, who were they asking that question of? Just town council for right now?
No, there is, uh, somebody who's come in, who is, um, an advisory council to the state, I think. I'm not sure exactly how it fits together. Somebody that can.
Okay. Who, who will occupy these? I mean, families, children, uh?
One, two, and three-bedroom units, so.
You're craning the hill in the middle of town. Might as well have one on the other end of town, right?
Why not?
The, the comment was made when the first hearings that this is a, um,
Light.
No, it, it was a, uh, it's a phrase that all of the developers are using, uncle, this, this kind of stuff. It'll come to me in a minute. It's the kind of thing which you would put in the middle of an urban environment. Because it's.
Urban sprawl?
It is urban.
Sustainable, sustainable building.
That's not the phrase. It'll come to me in a minute. Ah, smart growth. You call it smart growth.
Yeah.
Smart growth involves a lot of stuff.
Trains, planes.
Just the density that you can get.
Transportation, shop.
Transportation, mass, mass transit, amenities that are close by, that people can walk to.
Yeah, stores, whatever.
Areas that people can enjoy. That's smart growth. Pushing as many co- uh, units as you can of one piece of land, no amenities, no places to go.
And throw in a, and throw in a little field in the middle of it.
Whenever the state comes up with a catchy phrase, like green communities and smart growth and complete streets, gra- grab your ankles.
I'll tell you, one thing, I'm never flying in the army, I'll tell you that.
Well, I, 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 I would fight this. I think it's way too many units. Way too many units.
What about the height of the four stories? Is that an issue?
It would be for onset, because.
Well, their area owners want us up there for, I think they've got, um, it's not beyond their reach.
No.
They can't get at any of the rear of these buildings, except by ground layers.
I think, uh, isn't that by law, say thirty-eight feet?
Maybe thirty-five.
Thirty-five feet is the.
What's going on at Rosebrook? That's gotta be fifty feet at the peak.
I think for that zone, it goes up to forty feet.
Yeah, don't forget, it's, it's.
And it's even higher from the back.
But from, well, yeah, but from the front, what is it from, from the, how do, what do, how do you call that? It's from the highest grade. The average, is the average grade.
I think that was cha- a better description was put in last time meeting, I think. The average grade within.
But it's close, though.
Oh, yeah, it's close.
So where, where's the elevation in, in this? Is there an elevation ground?
Yeah, those, these are just layout plans.
Uh, I'm not sure, maybe they're here.
I didn't see him, Charlie.
No. There's a, there's a separate set of plans.
Do you, do you wanna pose a question on the height constraints?
We think it's thirty-five feet. We tied a commercial story at twelve feet.
Um, a residential, it might be, might be ten feet.
Even if you do it ten feet, you're at forty feet. That's the peak, right?
Well, in, in the zone, it could be the average of the.
I did account for each floor. That's how I got the numbers on that.
So over on Main Street, they put in forty-four or forty-five units. And that was that British fellow, remember, and then his partner became the preacher? Uh, and this, they wanted eighty-eight units. Never happened. Kenny Ferrera looked at him, he says, he's, he's, he's not gonna give in. He says to me afterwards, well, what'd it work? I says, cut it in half, you'll walk out of here tonight. He sat at the table, he says.
Well, they denied him shore connection, that's why.
Yeah, but I mean, for, well, that, that particular night. Yeah, forty-five units, we, we could live with that being signed all done, all they want.
If cornerstone had any money, if they were in private, they could've handed the town that lunch for that. There's no grounds to deny it.
It was too crowded.
And again, they sold it within.
Well, they were under duress, I think, at that point. I think they intended, you know, it's funny, I'm down in Florida, and not, right in the Cape Carlin area. It was a cornerstone development building down there, and it was.
Was them, yeah.
The same, uh, you know, crosses on the signs and all that. I said, I wonder if that's one of the brothers that moved out here.
Yeah, might have been. Were they brothers, those two guys? No.
I think so.
No.
He was brothers with, um, the rest of them were in South Plymouth, the rest of the family.
Oh, okay.
And when, uh, Pops' partner, he seen the light, that's when he broke up from his brothers.
Okay.
They used to work together once in a while.
Yeah, well.
But when they come, when the, when the clan got together again, they would brawl them all the time.
So much for the holy rollers, Charlie.
Tough family.
So, is there anything else I should write down, or?
No, I think that list is, uh, at least covers that we looked, took a look at it. How many units would fit there, Charlie? Like eighty, ninety?
I don't know. Long, a long ways from that if you went by the bylaws, for sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
'Cause they're not even allowed in the R one thirty district.
Right.
I don't know why anybody would wanna deal that, many tenants.
Well, it's just, it's just, they, they hire a manager to sit in there and chase them, you know, it's.
No, profitable, no doubt about it.
If it wasn't a buck in it, they wouldn't be doing it.
Uh, maybe notes.
So you got what you need to send through a, a letter for the Board of Appeals, George?
Yeah, I'll email it to Ken, and he can.
Are you gonna have enough here on April night? Will you be here, John?
I will, yeah.
That'll be it for you?
June, June.
That's a June.
Yeah.
Uh, were any of, we've got a couple of applicants, um.
Plus, he won't be here until April.
We do have an open associate position. Did, were any of you folks copied on those applications? I'll see if I can get that done.
Anybody interesting, or?
Um, there was one there that looked like he had some background, and I think he may have. I think he's an architect, as a matter of fact. I don't remember his name.
Oh, man, you gotta load up on architects.
That might get some support.
Somebody that speaks the same language.
Yeah, exactly. So don't forget, George, after June, I'm, I'm not putting my name in, so.
What?
Take, take, take somebody up, and then, and don't, I forget, after April, he, he won't be here either. Where are you going? You're sitting in the big chairs.
Yeah.
Oh, you're running for, is that you that's running?
That's him.
Oh.
It's my cousin.
Yeah, my cousin.
It's my cousin from Providence. Yeah.
That's the Bianco.
Came up from the Providence way, huh? Okay. Big chair, that big, this is a little pool goes on, and then you see.
Uh, if there's nothing.
See the will of the people.
That's all ahead on the agenda.
I'm perfectly content here.
Discussion? All in favor? Uh, meeting adjourned. What's that, nine twenty-five?
Excellent.
Close enough.